The results of the ascertaintment meeting. And has a incredibly detailed account of. What Windcam has been doing over the last five to 10 years. Now, they have really gone from a small operation at the white, at the high school. When the renovations are coming at the high school, they had to move off campus. And so they took out a facility on Swanton Street. They have since expanded that. It is a magnificent facility. If the select board hasn't visited it, I encourage you to do so. They have a very nice meeting room there, which they have made available to the town as part of the inventory. Of meeting rooms available for town meetings and indeed the cable advisory committee has held. One or two meetings there because the town hall was full. That said, they always had a desire to get back into the high school and now they're going back into the high school. So we are now finishing up with not one but two. Windcam facilities to serve the town. And I can only say that Windcam has gone from strength to strength over the last 10 years. So the cable advisory committee did review the documents that Lisa forwarded to you. And recommend them to you. I don't know whether the board has had time to review the documents. But we would like your approval to send them out to Comcast tomorrow. With that, I'll pause. Bill, I don't know if you want to add anything. And I remind you, you're on mute. And if Phil doesn't want to have anything to say, then I'll take questions from the board.
Well said, thank you.
Any questions from the select board?
I just wanted to start by thanking Ashley and also the superstar cable advisory committee. And all their hard work, their backgrounds are so impressive in this area. And it's been such a pleasure to be a liaison to that committee in the last few months. Also, I did want to echo what Ashley was saying about the Windcam facilities with their large men. It's really super impressive. And obviously, it's an important resource for the town and everyone takes such pride in it. And so certainly, we could talk for nights probably about all the dynamics going on that Ashley pointed out, including in this industry. There's also some interesting aspects regarding possible pending federal legislation. But the short of it is that what's in front of us is these agreements that Ashley's mentioned. So I'll let Bill take over from here.
I would like to thank Jackie for her very active participation. Before her, Mariano was very engaged with the committee. And Jackie has fully taken up the role that Mariano previously played. And from the school committee, Karen has been very engaged with us. And we are most appreciative for the contact we have with the two senior boards in town.
Yeah, thank you. So this is one of those interesting committees. I believe it's the only committee that goes dormant for almost a decade. And then like Cicada comes back from underground, I believe. I am, I am taking that saying from Mr. Stevens here. So Ashley, forgive me if I, if I don't, if it doesn't sound as funny when I say it. But you know, everybody in the cable advisory committee does so much work. And I think a lot of people in town don't realize that. Almost all of the funding for Windcam comes from these agreements, these franchise fee agreements that we have with Verizon and Comcast. And Windcam provides a. An incredible service to the residents of the town. The programming is fantastic. The transparency of government wouldn't be what it is without Windcam. So just, it's very important. And of course, we know that technology changes and the FCC is certainly not, at this point. Friendly to local community broadcast or to open government or just to democracy in general at this point. But you know, we will do what we can to support Windcam.
There's one highlight I forgot to mention. Both renewal licenses will include one HD channel for Windcam. The last licenses, 2006, 2010, they had two channels with the possibility to expand. They met the criteria to expand and have added a third channel on both Windcare on Verizon and Comcast. And both of the renewal licenses will now get them into the high definition part of the channel lineup as well.
Well, I could just say this, which we all know that Windcam is a tremendous community asset. And they really have, it is remarkable how, how much they've grown and changed over these years. And just very seriously upgraded their operation and really have woven themselves into the fabric of the community with their new facility. And reading what they envision doing. Sort of reinventing and reinvigorating their activities at the high school would be a great opportunity for the students and the staff there. So yeah, this, this is very important to the town.
One of the things that really came out in the renewal process, the ascertaintment process that impressed me so much. Was the number of students at the high school who have gone on to pursue careers in media, TV, film. Who got their start through taking courses and interning with Windcap. That is just a remarkable contribution that. The only comment I made today when I read his document that you've been sent was that I encouraged him to add that element. As another of their contributions to the town in future iterations of that document.
Great, thank you again, Ashley, Bill and everyone involved and Jackie for your service and Mariano too, since this has started. Been going for a couple of years now. So Ashley, right now you need a singularly approval for the request for response for submission.
Yep, please.
I'll take a motion. For approval by the select board of a request for response for submission to Comcast.
So I move that we approve the request for response directed to Comcast as presented.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote to Mariano.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
And yes for me, it's unanimous four to zero. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And please feel free to stay on, but I appreciate that you might want to be doing something else this evening. So it was great, it was great to see you in the, even in a remote session. So thanks again.
And anticipate us being before you at least twice more before the middle of September. And we look forward to bringing finished licenses back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
And before we get into the next part of our agenda, just wanted to make the announcement that our next regularly scheduled meetings will be Monday, May 4th. And Monday, May 18th. We are also, for the time being. Scheduling every Thursday morning at 8:30 meetings in relation to the COVID response and the state of emergency. For items that we need to handle between our meetings. But. If we can start, Lisa, is there anything else that we wanted to jump on? I see Ms. Mann is here on. Request from TWK.
We should just move forward with everything that has a guest right now.
So I do have a couple of questions. I know that. TWK is looking to. Change their doing business as designation to the spot. And if this man could speak a little bit to that, I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of TWK. We're just seeking to rebrand the restaurant to be more of a neighborhood style. To upgrade the menu or change the menu and that's really it. And we do have another restaurant called The Spot in Georgetown, which is a small neighborhood restaurant that's very successful. It has a fairly diverse menu and we're hoping that that would succeed in Winchester as well.
I just wanted to note that before we get into the point of this, but that we, on behalf of the, I think it's before the board, that we really appreciate your commitment and investment in the town.
Thank you. My client is definitely committed to making this restaurant work.
Right, I was gonna ask you, I'm assuming you're an attorney on behalf of your client, but if you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I am. And I appeared so many times. It's putting me off because I can't see myself, but I can. So I'm like, oh, this is weird, okay.
Yeah, but anyway, if you could just let your client know that as well, thank you.
I most certainly will, I appreciate that very much.
Ms. Mann, I did have a couple inquiries about this from other restaurant establishments in Winchester. About conversations that they had had in the past when TWK was opening and about the concept and being willing to. At least agree that similar concepts would. You know, would not be engaged in on the property. And so I do have a concern about that without, you know, any sort of, you know, anything in front of me, any sort of agreement or anything. I did get a couple of phone calls more at the last minute, just prior to our meeting.
I don't even know what that is. I've never, I've never seen such an agreement and I've never partied in one. I mean, I honestly don't know what that's about. I mean, this is simply a doing business as change. There's no stylistic impediment to a change in menu. But this most certainly, in my opinion, isn't going to be similar to any of the other restaurants I know that are on that street. That's what I kind of think of. This is a very independent concept that they've developed over time.
So is the, is the, the menu and concept going to stay exactly the same? It's just a name change?
No, it is definitely going to change. It's going to be, you know, they'll have, they'll have sushi still, they'll have bed burgers. Kind of a diverse menu, but it won't, it won't be the same exact menu style it is now. Now it's more of a full sit down restaurant, a little bit more of an elevated brand. And they think it needs to be more of a neighborhood restaurant where people come in to collect, see people talk and gather. So I mean, the menus, their menus are always pretty fluid, that really, pretty fluid menus. But it will have sushi and that's what it has now too.
It does seem that, that, that there are similar concepts in Winchester to what you're describing. And, you know, and without knowing any of the history of, you know, when the restaurant was opening, what was agreed to or not, you know.
There was absolutely nothing ever agreed to, nor would we ever have agreed to something with another restaurant, ever.
Were there any restrictions at the time on the property with the landlord or any of the other establishments that are there?
No, the only restriction was that we don't, you know, have outdoor entertainment that's allowed because there are a lot of residences. But there were no menu style or restaurant style restrictions, no.
And now we're, when the, the business opened, were you the attorney that filed the paper work for it?
I most certainly was, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm just a little bit unsure how to proceed, just because I've, you know, received notification from these other establishments.
Quite honestly, I mean, with all deference to your decision making, it's a doing business as, it's a perfunctory request, simply to amend the record. It has nothing to do with the concept. If I change the name, it's simply what they're going to be called. I could, I could change their menu tomorrow and not have to come before the board. So it's not about that. It's just, it's really a record keeping aspect. So that if somebody has an issue, that they're able to go to the town clerk under the name of whatever it may be, doing business as the spot, doing business TWK. And determine who is the actual owner. That's the sole purpose for this.
And as far as you know, there's no other agreement with any other parties regarding the type of restaurant food serves there.
Best of mine, I have never created anything in writing for them with regard to that. But notwithstanding, the DBA has nothing to do with that at all, nothing. I don't understand why somebody would have complained about a change in business name. I mean, it would have been a private restriction nonetheless, but no, I have no familiarity with any such restriction.
Okay. Questions from the board?
So my view is if there is such a restriction with the, with the landlord approving the change in DBA wouldn't. Wouldn't change that. Is that, is that correct? So if somebody were able to produce such an agreement or contract, us taking this action now wouldn't change that?
Exactly right. So the doing business is simply a change in name. The concept changed to the extent, which I believe there is not, but to the extent there were to be any use restriction, you are 100% correct. This change in name would have no impact on that. We would be limited. We would be bound by whatever contract was signed. However, I don't believe there is any.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, no. So should I make a motion that we, that we approve the name change? By TWK to change the name to The Spot Winchester as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you very much for hanging on, waiting around for us, Ms. Mann. And let us know if there's anything else that we need to do on our end.
Well, certainly. Thank you and be well. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, I think that takes care of. Anyone else that is a guest here? Lisa, I don't know if you wanted to start up with your report.
Yeah, yeah, let's just jump into the two reclassifications. So the first one is in the DPW, it's the S27 principal clerk position. So in accordance with section 4-2B of the town charter, I've made the following reclassification appointment in the Department of Public Works. So Maureen Oliver Winchester, Mass. to an S27 principal clerk, respectfully requesting to waive the 15 day period.
Susan, you're muted.
So I move that we waive the customary 15 day waiting period for the reclassification appointment of Maureen Oliver to S27 principal clerk.
Second.
All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, it's unanimous four to zero.
And the second one is the building clerk, so the building department is S25 clerk. So in accordance with section 4-2B of the town charter, I've made the following reclassification appointment in the building department to Athena Biford Winchester, Mass. To an S25 senior clerk position, also requesting to waive the 15 day waiting period.
I move that we waive the customary 15 day waiting period for the reclassification appointment of Athena Biford to S25 senior clerk.
Second.
All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion carries unanimously four to zero.
Moving on to other updates, starting with the caseload. 71 cases with 33 active cases and two deceased. Nursing homes are really a primary concern right now and have been sort of a topic of discussion among state officials as to what to do. Representative Day informed us earlier today that the Department of Public Health is now going to require testing. And conduct in-person inspections of long-term nursing care facilities after we made a series of requests last week. So that's good news that we're all, we're all kind of pushing in that direction. And they're also going to increase more staff supports that they announced today. They're going to conduct baseline inspections of all facilities starting next week. They're going to have scores, red, yellow and green, and then they're going to do follows as necessary. And then funding assistance will be, to a certain extent, contingent on those scores. So our Board of Health Director has been working very diligently with our nursing and long-term care facilities on. Making sure that they're aware of the resources that are needed. But I think one of the things that we found is that the response has been inconsistent. So you know, some do more than others and it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of work when things are kind of done inconsistently. So having this response from the state is very welcome news for what we're facing. So looking at the data from two weeks ago, we were at 71, sorry, 35 cases with 14 active. So the cases have doubled in the last two weeks. Which is actually a very, a much slower rate than our surrounding communities, which we've seen. Increase quite a bit and we can certainly debate the number of factors regarding that. But I will say that we obviously want to continue to see that number. Be as low as possible and do everything we can, given that 56% of cases and that keeps growing every time we get reports are in nursing facilities. So again, that remains our primary concern, but it's really a reflection to what happens in the wider community. So if there's community spread, it's asymptomatic and then it gets into a nursing home, that's where we're really concerned. So we just want to remind folks that. Even if you don't necessarily see any impacts to yourself. We as a community know that that community spread can happen to our nursing facilities, can happen to our most vulnerable. So we're going to continue to do everything that we can to, to keep folks safe. And we can talk about some of those measures under the state of emergency. But before we do, I just want to talk about a few other things that town is doing. So we, we started issuing road permits last week, so Eversource and some other projects have started construction in the road. Our rec director, the new one starts on Friday, so I've already been meeting with him on the rec budget that we've sort of discussed of. Sort of what needs to happen when, when programs aren't going to be the same as they were this past year. From a. Let's see, from a remote town meeting perspective, Senator Lewis said the legislation should be happening sometime this week. So I will let you guys know if that passes and then we can kind of discuss if that's an option. The warrant has closed as of Friday for a town meeting. So we're just working on putting that together and we'll bring that before the board in another draft form soon. And I think the, the big news today was that there wasn't any news on extending the May 4th advisory yet. But at least the governor did acknowledge that he's going to give further guidance on the state home advisory and non-essential business advisory. I informed the staff today at our Monday all staff meeting. That town buildings will not be reopening on May 4th, no matter what the governor says. So we're going to be working on a phased plan for gradually opening up public services and public buildings to the public. But there's a lot of work that we need to do in terms of ensuring continued safe social distancing. It might include some physical improvements, it might include policy changes, it might include hours and so on. So we're working on that plan right now. And I, I think that.
Can I just mention one thing? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't ever want to interrupt your report, but just so everybody's aware, I'm sure Mike is, that, and you might have noticed this was one that. SJC, the Supreme Judicial Court today extended the court closure, other than for emergency business to June 1st. I just thought I'd mention so that there's a parallel there if you are looking for one with respect to access to public buildings.
Great. I appreciate that. And I'm sure when they open up on June 1st, it's not going to be a free for all either. I'm sure they'll, they'll put some procedures in place as well. So we're kind of doing the same thing. We're, we're not sure what that initial date will be. It might be June 1st and might be another date. I think once we start, we started inventorying sort of the needs of different departments. And once we kind of collectively look at it, the cost and how quickly we can implement it. We're also kind of still at the, hopefully the tail end of the surge. So we're still awaiting more information before we make a decision. So that's the extent of my updates right now. I don't know if we want to move into a discussion about the state of emergency.
I don't see any, anyone here from the audience, but if there is anybody that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda already, this would be the time. Seeing none, then we can go right into business item one. And I know Lisa, you've already touched a little bit on the state of emergency, but I had a couple of things for the board, but I can, I can wait.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure if we wanted to discuss the mask.
Yes.
Do now, so.
Yeah, let's discuss that. I know that we had received kind of a lot of requests from the, on the chamber calls about masks in some of our establishments. So I think the Board of Health is putting together some sort of restriction in that regard. And I don't know if you have any updates, Lisa, let me see if I can find the.
So the Attorney General just issued something today that basically lends a lot of support to the different initiatives that. Or different orders or advisories that towns are putting together regarding masks, which is a lot different than the conversation we were having last week. So the, so the Board of Health is considering a, sorry. So the Board of Health had sort of an advisory before and they're moving towards a face covering order. And they've been doing a lot of work talking with businesses on signage. And my understanding is that every business they've talked to so far has agreed to put up the signage about requiring masks before going into their place of business. So the, right now, the order that they're looking at is pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 122. So related to the Declaration of Public Health Emergency, they're asking that all members of the public entering any essential business. As defined by Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive orders, including but not limited to grocery and convenience stores, pharmacies, hardware stores, banks, government agencies, liquor, beer. Wine stores and the like must wear a facial covering such as a fabric mask, scarf or bandana over their nose and mouth. So it doesn't have to be a surgical mask or an N95 respirator, which we advise the left for first responders and medical professionals. And then we're asking that all members of the public entering a restaurant for the purposes of picking up food for takeout. Also must wear a facial covering over their mouth and nose. And then we're asking that all employees. And then we're asking that all employees of all essential businesses open to the public shall wear a facial covering over their mouth and nose. And that food and goods delivery personnel also wear, um, facial coverings as well when delivering food or goods to the, the customer, if there's a person-to-person exchange. That any resident or member of the general public, including the workforce, entering or exiting a residential or commercial building complex of greater than one person must wear a facial covering. And then, um, that people, um, properly dispose of all clothes and facial coverings and that each essential business, uh, post signage of such. And their, um, uh, the emergency order, um, is looking to be in effect, um, this week.
So we will pick that up Thursday morning. I think that the Board of Health was meeting on that and, um, will circulate a draft, um, for us to, uh, potentially vote on Thursday as well. Uh, but I think they are targeting it to be effective, uh, Thursday afternoon. And, uh, they're not including, um, any fines to go along with it. So, um, we will enforce the order, but, um, at least at this time, um, there wasn't the feeling that a, um, any sort of fine associated with it would, um, would be necessary. So, um, we'll see. The, um, the other, um, issue kind of following that for us to talk about probably Thursday, I'm guessing, is, um, in regards to the, uh, order on real estate showings that we had voted, um, a couple of weeks ago and to see, you know, coming into the expiration of that order, um, how we, you know, how we move forward. So, um, I know that there's been some conversations between the various realtors that have been involved and, um, how to proceed. I think our goal, you know, was to at least at that point, um, have the, those, um, have those restrictions in place during this surge period. So we'll have to have a conversation about whether or not to continue those, to change the order or to, um, keep it in place for an extended period of time. I don't know if there are any, um, comments from the board on, on any of those issues or questions?
I have a quick question, um, our suggestion, and that is, um, Lisa, when we, you know, vote on this, um, mask, order, it'd be really helpful to have some kind of a press release or something to go out, um, so that we can communicate it, um, quickly.
Yeah, th- this definitely would be deserving of a, a reverse nine-one-one, you know, email blasts on social media. So just about every popular way we can think about it, we would put it up. I think this, the signage is really important too, right? So if you're, I mean, if you're going into one of these businesses and the signs are right there and they enforce it, then.
Yeah.
That's really key.
Good.
So I'll also, I'll send you the background that the, the Attorney General's guidance on local authority amid COVID-nineteen was just issued today, um, answering a lot of questions. I just, I just, I'm going to send that to everybody.
My comment is, uh, yeah, I'm in favor of, uh, of requiring the masks at the local level as well as, uh, continuing the restrictions we placed on real estate, uh, in-person, uh, showings. I think, uh, you know, now it's not the time to let up. I know everybody's been through, uh, a very hard time with this, uh, with the social distancing and, uh, we are, uh, seeing the results of that, positive results of flattening the curve. And, um, I, I hope that we don't, um, become complacent too early and see a resurgence.
Yeah, just in preparation for Thursday, and I probably could look this up, but is the real estate date that we had before, was it May fourth or was it May first?
I, I believe it was the fourth, I, and.
It was May fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of extending that too.
Okay, so we'll put all of those on the agenda for Thursday.
Okay, um, uh, any other, um, state of emergency-related, um, questions or anything that, uh, board members would like us to discuss on Thursday in relation to that, that we haven't already had a conversation about? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our business agenda, which I think is the, uh, budget.
Yeah, so the, uh, the, the, the budget seems to be the, um, I seem to be always in budget mode. The, the primary, um, change from last week is that there is some potential discussion that, um, the, the cuts may or may not be as bad as we think they're going to be, um, because eighty-five percent of the, uh, state aid in Winchester is chapter seventy, which is, um, education aid. And, um, there are some thought that even though the unrestricted government aid might be cut pretty hard, that there'll be some, um, backfilling and support to chapter seventy. Um, I think initially I talked about kind of a twenty percent reduction in, um, state aid revenues across the board, which would have been, um, several million dollar reduction. If we're looking at maybe like a five percent in, um, chapter seventy and, uh, you know, fifteen, twenty percent in state aid, then that number is in the, um, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's not in the millions of dollars. So it's a, it's a pretty big difference. Obviously, we're just still preparing the budget for worst-case scenario. I'm in contact with, um, the Finance Committee as to some suggestions. But right now, it's just a big question mark about, um, about revenues and, uh, I'll update you when we know more.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Um, I know that we've been kind of jumping around on the agenda here, but it seems like we might be at the end of it. Um, what do you think? Um, I, I will just draw the board's attention to, uh, a letter that we received as part of our packet from the letter from the Commissioner of, of, um, Commissioner of Trust Funds, um, in regards to, um, our current status. I know there's been a lot of uneasiness about the market and where the town's investments are. So, um, it was a very, um, well-written and, uh, explanatory letter. So, um, I urge you to take a look at that. I think it, um, uh, shows that we are very, very well represented and, um, are even in the midst of, uh, a, a crisis like this, are, are, are holding our own. So, are there any other questions or comments from board members or future agenda items or anything that, uh, is not on the agenda tonight that anyone wanted to raise?
I have one thing. Sorry, I hate to pull on this, but, um, uh, I'm just very mindful that town meeting, although it's often June, is coming up. And I'm thinking that we need to put forth an extra effort this year to have really good explanatory materials and, um, things, things that we can put out, uh, to town meeting members in advance, so that they understand, um, what they're voting on and that they, uh, you know, we don't have a lot of, um, questions or uneasiness at the last minute. So I'd just like to, you know, volunteer to help in that effort in any way that I can. Help draft or proofread or, or whatever. I'm not sure how the, you know, how that magic gets done for all that, that big book of motions and, um, background notes, but I, I think that's going to be extraordinarily, um, important this year. So.
Yeah, and to that point, I saw that the town clerk had circulated a survey of town meeting members, uh, in regards to, um, remote participation and remote voting, whether or not to reduce the quorum requirement for, um, town meetings. So there are some things in the works and, um, as we said, we're trying to really filter down the, um, uh, the agenda for town meeting, um, because it's, it's a little bit unusual for us. We want to make sure that we're, um, representing everybody and, um, not, not overdoing it as, as far as subject matter. So, um, thank you, Susan. The other thing that I forgot to mention, Lisa, have, um, have we heard anything about the, um, Waterfield Road, um, request that we had from T-TAC? I, I know that, uh, Jay was working on that and, um, maybe we can, for our next meeting, um, take a look at that. There, there was some question about whether to put a crosswalk, um, right, the bike path of Waterfield Road and whether or not that was possible. And, um, whether Tool could weigh in on that, um, and give us a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll have, uh, I'll see if I can have, um, see when Tool can have that recommendation done.
Yeah, I, I, I know it came in through Roger Wilson and, um, hopefully we can address it then. I, um, always mindful that there are, um, professionals, um, that can advise us on those things, because most of my ideas are usually pretty, pretty bad. So, um, um, so we'll see. But if there's nothing else, then we'll, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Again.
Uh, all in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And, uh, yes for me. It's, uh, unanimous four to zero. Uh, thank you again, everyone. Thank you, Lisa and Wind Cam. We will see you, uh, Thursday, if not before.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, John, Wind Cam.
Thank you.